David, you want to touch on that?
There's been some discussion regarding whether or not the city council would amend the sign ordinance to allow for digital or electronic signs, ground signs for commercial properties in B1, B2, B3, B4, and B5, and M1. This would add a section 8.8 that would create supplementary criteria guidelines for business and industrial zoning districts as set forth in Exhibit 6. Exhibit 6 would also be added, and this would allow for one digital electronic sign per sign face or ground sign, subject to the following terms in those zoning classifications: that it display only static messages, remain constant intensity, and not have movement, not operate at an intensity level of more than .3-foot candles over ambient light, measured at 150 feet away, be equipped with fully operational light sensor that automatically adjusts the intensity of the sign according to the amount of ambient light, change from one message to another message not more frequently than four times in every 24-hour period. Now, this was the language that we used on the causeway. You all may be more comfortable with more frequent changes, but I want to get something in front of y'all so y'all could give some input back on that. Be designed to either freeze the display in a static position or display full black screen, or turn off in the event of a malfunction. What we don't want to do is a thing to malfunction and just roll and flash and create a distraction. Not be authorized until the building and zoning administrator has provided evidence that best industry practices for eliminating and reducing uplight and light trespass are built into the board, or the sign, that's just a digital sign. Not be authorized within 250 feet of a residential district. Again, this was what we used on the causeway. You may look up and down 31 and say that we need to relax that a bit, based on impact. Not exceed 60 square foot of sign face and not be used for outdoor advertising, which is basically off-premise advertising. It should only be used for events on that site. Information on the sign to lend to advertising business on their location or related premises. Continuous streaming flashing, video flashing would be prohibited. And then, we only allow these signs between 12:01, I'm sorry, from 5, excuse me, from 5:00 AM till midnight. And during the hours of 12:01 to 5:00 AM, they're required to power down and be turned off. That's to give adjacent residential places and areas a rest. Now, again, that was on the causeway how we did that. You may all feel differently about that in other commercial districts, but I wanted to put this in front of you for y'all to look at and discuss.
Thank you, David. We're not going to get into detailed discussion. I wanted y'all to see it, so you can start looking at it. We will have something for your May 5th agenda. If you have any input, things you'd like to see, I would appreciate that you let us know so we can incorporate any changes you'd like to see on that, start moving it forward. We're getting requests quite frequently from a lot of our existing businesses and churches and all those good kind of things. And honestly, you know, we've talked about putting a digital sign here, so we can't have a rule and us do something different. So, we sort of need to look at that and think about it. And David, that's a new twist I just threw at you, but it is something that came to my mind, so. Any other comment from council? That's something we'll have to look at, so. That's why I just threw it out there at you. So if y'all would, just let me know what you got with that. Any other business for the work session? Any sticky notes I need to know about? All right, do I? All right, do I have a motion to close the work session, please?
So moved.
Is it six? Yeah. All right, let's open up the meeting. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Here.
Gusterson?
Here.
Perry?
Here.
Win?
Here.
Brabner?
Mayor.
I am here. I am vacation and pledge to be led by Councilmember Shane Perry. If you please rise.
Father, thank you for the opportunity to come aboard the city and do business. Father, we just pray that you give us guidance and wisdom, help us make the correct decisions and that fit the needs of our citizens. Father, we pray for our first responders and our citizens that are in need of help today. For your son's name we pray. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. I ask for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, work session April 7, 2025, the regular meeting April 7, 2025, and the special meeting April 10, 2025. Are there any corrections? If not, the stand approved as written. Committee reports, Ms. Gaines?
No further reports, sir.
Mr. Connor?
No further reports, Mayor. No report, Mayor. No report, Mayor.
No report.
Yes, sir. On April, yeah, April 14th, the planning commission did approve two items. One was the final plat approval for Phase 4 of Brentwood. And the second one was a combination of a subdivision combining two lots, existing lots into one lot in Cambraun subdivision.
Thank you, Ms. Smith, Mr. Gusterson. Anything on junior council?
They have been on spring break, and so now they're not active, but they are looking forward to helping out with Delta Woods and Waters, which I think you'll be referencing here pretty soon in the announcements.
Ms. Brabner? Three meals?
Three meals.
Hello, welcome to Spanish Fort High School. My name is Jennifer Fleck, and I am the AP Environmental Teacher and regular environmental science teacher. Okay, I would like to share with you some of the things that I was able to purchase thanks to the three-mill funds. Starting over here, we have one of the aquatic fish tanks that is responsible for holding all of our mosquito fish. These are going to be used for the AP Environmental Eco columns that they do every year studying terrestrial and aquatic biodomes. Over here in this tank, I was also able to purchase funds for aquatic plants. The aquatic plants will be used for regular environmental science as well as AP science for photosynthesis, so the students can actually see photosynthesis happening before their eyes. And then furthermore, over here, my new purchase with the funds are some hermit crabs. And these hermit crabs are going to be used for regular and AP environmental science. How we will use hermit crabs in science is they are going to study the side effects of humans collecting shells and leaving the hermit crabs to use plastic as their new shell. Those are our photosynthesis labs. And so what the students will end up doing is they will put them inside of tubes, and then when they run the chemical test with it, they are able to see the bubbles coming up from the plant, which is showing them releasing the oxygen. And the students will then count the rate of oxygen that the plants are releasing. Students will learn about the different types of leaves of plants and coming from different biomes. And so not all leaf structures look the same. For example, I would teach them that the cactus thorns on a cactus are actually leaves. They're modified leaves. And we talk about how plants have different types of modified leaves, and then they study them at the table. With the purchase of all of the supplies that I was able to get with the three-mill tax, I'm actually doing science with my students. We're doing science. When I say doing science, we're actually going outside. They're able to touch things. They're very kinesthetic now, and it's less paper and more doing.
I kind of wish I had that available when I was in school because I am not a science person whatsoever. Just wanted to announce that we have a three-mill tax committee meeting this Thursday at 5:30 at Rockwell School. It is an open meeting, so you're welcome to come and attend. And this meeting, the principals have put together their list of want items, so we'll be looking at some of those and help getting the budget together for next year. So, three-mill matters.
You know, three-mill has proven to be very successful to our city. It has helped our schools tremendously, to the point where all of our schools are A-rated schools, and that's something to be very proud of. That drives the value of a city, the properties, everything involved. School matters, so. Mayor, thank you for your work on that. Any other reports I left out? I think I got them all this time. Open up the floor for public participation. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward, give us your name and address. Come to the podium, press the speak button, please. No one? Okay, under announcements, the city would like to thank Mr. Wallace Gilberry for co-sponsoring the annual Easter egg hunt, which was Saturday, was very successful. It was very well attended, between not only Easter eggs, 10,000 of them. They had a football camp with some professional football players helping the kids play a little ball. And then they had a three-on-three basketball tournament on our new outdoor basketball courts out there. Well-attended, had food for everybody, drink for everybody. Want to thank Mr. Gilberry for his co-sponsoring this event, along with the city and our city employees helping with everything. Shannon, I'm sure they were out there picking up Easter eggs and gum wrappers and everything else today. Thank you for your efforts in getting that park ready to host this event. The 15th Annual Delta Woods and Water Expo, sponsored by the City of Spanish Fort and the Five Rivers Delta Resource Center, will be held at Five Rivers on the causeway April 26th, this coming Saturday, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, featuring presentations and exhibitions from experienced outdoorsmen, professional educators, enthusiasts. Delta Woods and Water includes numerous fun and exciting hands-on demonstration, which will allow attendees to learn and practice new skills with one-on-one instruction. The event is free to the public. On Sunday, May 18th, the Baldwin Pops will be performing a free concert here at the community center at 6 o'clock. Bring your tailgate chairs and enjoy the pops by the pond. Fine arts, music, and entertainment. We'll have an art guild show prior to the concert, beginning at 5:00 PM inside the community center.
And Mayor, to add to that, I have learned in the last day or so since I prepared that, the guest emcee is scheduled to be Alan Seals, the meteorologist, and this will be a patriotic concert, and Eastern Shore Coral Society is scheduled to be there as well to sing.
Thank you, Becky. I would like to add one thing. Some of our employees took it upon themselves to do something we've never done before, and that was to honor our dispatchers for this past, I think it was last week, Chief, is that right? Dispatch week here in the city. And April McDonald grabbed it and ran with it and got at least 20 different companies to contribute things, between hats and shirts and manicures and gift cards and dinner and lunches and car washes and Coca-Colas, sodas, all kind of things. So I commend April for doing that, and Chief, I think it went off very well. So, thank you, April, for what you did on that. There is no old business on a new business. It's always good, we're going to swear in a couple of firefighters. Chief Few, if you'll please come forward with the city clerk, Becky Gaines, the swearing firefighters, Jason Minard and David Hall.
Gentlemen, if you'll raise your right hands and repeat after me. You might want to read this. I state your name. I state your name.
I, Jason Minard.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama and the laws thereof. As long as I am a citizen thereof. And that I will faithfully and honestly, without partiality or prejudice. Execute and discharge the duties of the Office of Firefighter for the City of Spanish Fort, Alabama, to the best of my ability, so help me God. Thank you.
Welcome to the city, guys. Appreciate y'all coming. On behalf of the city council, we appreciate you and what you do for the city, and we look forward to a long, long relationship. Isn't that right, Chief? You want to add anything to that? This is your chance, y'all want to talk, here's your chance. Nope, I didn't think so. I'm going to stand right here because we've got one more thing to recognize tonight with the fire department. Chief Few is going to recognize a couple of firefighters, Chase Minard and Chase Bozeman for a CPR save.
You know, it's an honor to be able to recognize these folks, and I'm going to briefly read you a synopsis of a call that was relayed to me by their supervisor, Lieutenant Lee. And this was in the fall of last year. Chase Bozeman and Jason Minard responded to a report of a cardiac arrest. CPR had been begun prior to our arrival. On arrival, they found a 65-year-old male on the floor, pulseless and not breathing. They quickly attached the AED. The AED advised them to shock the patient, first shock was administered. After the first shock, the patient did not have a pulse and was not breathing. They began assisting with the ventilations and administering oxygen. They completed another round of CPR and AED advice for a second shock. That shock was delivered, the patient still did not have a pulse and was not breathing. Another round of CPR was completed, then the AED advised to administer a third shock. That shock was delivered. This time, the patient responded with a steady, rapid pulse. CPR was stopped, they assisted with ventilation. They continued to monitor the patient, wasn't along with the AED advice that a fourth shock was needed. This shock was delivered, and the patient actually became alert and was able to speak. The ambulance crew arrived and started ALS care, and the patient was transported to the Malvis ER with firefighter Minard on board. And so this was the case where everything just kind of worked out right. The neighbor was actually a nurse, and they were doing CPR. Early CPR is the key in these situations, so. It is my honor to recognize these guys with a life-saving award, so we'll get Chase and Jace to step forward. We have two certificates. One is our certificate of recognition, and the other is a certificate from the American Heart Association, and it basically says, "Thank you. It's a pleasure to honor you for acting so courageously and swiftly and to offering life-saving aid." Today, many Americans feel helpless during a emergency because they do not know how to administer CPR or afraid to hurt the victim. We want to recognize the heroes who stepped up to save a life. Thank you for performing the heroic act of CPR, a critical link in our chain of survival. Not only helps save a life when you own your community, but you're also partnering with the American Heart Association to improve the survival rate for citizens who receive CPR. So with that, recognize these gentlemen.
Here again. Anybody want to speak?
On behalf of the city council, and certainly the citizens of our city, and certainly this 65-year-old man, thank you. Your professionalism, the way you handled the situation, I don't expect anything less. That's exactly what I thought you would do, so. Thank you so much from the city and the citizens of our town. We appreciate you very much.
We'll have a public hearing on this one tonight. It's ordinance number 702, 2025, and ordinance, amending ordinance number 688, 2024, and altering and establishing district lines for boundaries for the 2025 and subsequent municipal elections. David?
Mayor, this is an ordinance establishing and amending the boundaries, district line and boundaries for the districts for municipal elections. This is done in response and based on the 2020 census that has been conducted. Previously, we looked at the census blocks, and you all had a hearing to generally establish those boundaries. This is to correct and clarify, further clarify those boundaries for each district. In the work session, we discussed a couple of small changes or clarifications to make, and I want to go through those real quick. In Exhibit 1, in District 1, in the section that says also included in voting District 1, pin number 26501 should be changed to read 265077. That was 265071, should be changed to read 265077. And pin 111965 should be changed to read 111695. In addition, in voting District 2, in the also included section, we should add pin 7162. And in the District 5 description, where it says less than accept and excluding from that district, we should add 39788, and those are pin numbers. Otherwise, the ordinance appears to be in good order for your consideration in public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Connor. Any discussion from the council before we open up the public hearing? Hearing none. Public hearing is now open. If you'd like to address this council on this item, please come forward, give us your name and address. Public hearing is now closed. Any discussion from the council?
Mayor, just for purposes of this, any motion would be made, should be made, if you are inclined to approve, would be a motion to approve with the amendments offered at the work session and discussed by staff at this meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Connor. Any discussion from the council? Do I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt ordinance 702-2025, with the amendments made and suggested during the work session and discussed during this meeting.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
Gusterson?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Win?
Yes.
Brabner?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, the ordinance is adopted. Excuse me. Like to introduce ordinance number 703, 2025, an ordinance exempting certain covered items from municipal sales and use tax during the third weekend of July 2025, as authorized by the state, back-to-school sales tax holiday legislation. Ms. Connor?
Mayor, the legislature has adopted sections 40-23-210 through 213, which authorizes the state back-to-school sales tax holiday. The city, by approving this resolution, would exempt covered items from the city's 1.5% municipal sales and use tax during that period of time, beginning at 12:01 AM on the third Friday in July, which is July 18, 2025, and ending at 12 o'clock midnight on the following Sunday, July 20, 2025. This would exempt from the city's sales and use tax, but would not exempt sales from the district license fees or levies at the Spanish Fort Town Center and the Eastern Shore Center.
Thank you, Ms. Connor. Any discussion from the council? Being introduced tonight will be on your May 5th agenda. Like to present Resolution 1491, 2025, a resolution accepting certain streets for maintenance. Ms. Connor?
Mayor, this is a request by Jason Estes on behalf of Duberry Engineers for the city to accept the streets in Churchill Phase 5 for maintenance, and those include Thistle Down Loop and Bramshaw Drive in Churchill Phase 1, according to the plat thereof, recorded at instrument number 2177250 in the office of the Judge of Probate. A copy of the proposed maintenance bond, which is a two-year maintenance bond to cover any defects in the public improvements accepted by the city during that period of time, is attached in the amount of $516,321.79, and a copy of the engineer's estimate in support of that bond valuation is also attached as an exhibit.
Thank you, Ms. Connor. Discussion from the council? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 1491-2025.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Gusterson?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Win?
Yes.
Brabner?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. Like to present Resolution 1494, 2025, a resolution authorizing Mayor to enter an agreement with Forever Lawn Inc. for materials and installation of a children's playground. Ms. Connor?
Mayor, 1494, 2025, has authorized the mayor to enter an agreement with Forever Lawn Inc. for the provision of what is basically an artificial turf playground at the new park that's under construction and upgrades at the Spanish Fort Town Center that's been deeded to the city. The cost of this is an amount of $297,530 for labor and materials, and the cost of the proposal and the evaluation exhibits for Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative are taxed Exhibit 1 and Exhibit 2.
Thank you, Ms. Connor. Discussion from the council?
Am I reading this? Are we getting a whole new playground, or are we just getting turf? Because this says new playground equipment.
There is, Shannon, there's no new equipment, is there?
It's replacing the turf, installing the underdrain, and there are some things that they had from a previous job that are in there, but there shouldn't be a dollar amount assigned to them.
I mean, the way it's written, I would assume from this, we're getting new playground equipment.
There's no equipment involved.
Then why are we having an ordinance, that resolution, that says new equipment?
Does that mean the equipment that...
Include the extras that are added into the contract, the drainage, all of that. I just put equipment, and they are adding some extra things for free that they have.
None of which is spelled out here.
What are they adding that is? I don't have a copy in my package, that's my first issue. Shannon, what are they adding?
There was a mound structure that would be incorporated into the artificial turf, and then a hopscotch that's incorporated into the artificial turf.
So that's not really equipment? That's just the turf being utilized differently, correct?
The mound is, could be classified as equipment, yes. It's a...
Dirt, put the turf over, right? Is that what they're doing?
No, it's a prefabricated...
I can't see you over there.
It's a prefabricated unit that is pre-turfed, and they just incorporated into the existing turf around it.
Okay. And the hopscotch, is that just painted on the turf?
It's, yeah, essentially.
The exhibit is more explanatory than what the resolution says, because if I read the resolution, I think we're getting new swings and slides and everything, but the exhibit specifically talks about the turf. But there's nothing in here that says what they're going to give us for free. I kind of like it reworded. Not the exhibit, but I think the resolution should tell us what we're getting.
I had that same little bit of confusion the last time it was introduced, and when it's, I read playground to be stuff you play on, and they call the playground the ground in that exhibit. And so, what we're getting is what's outlined in the exhibit, but I hear what you're saying. That's why I had asked the question before, too, if you recall, the last work session, and we were told was that it is playgrounds, equipment... and, and we, we were told was that it is playgrounds, equipment, academy grass, is what, a playground grass is what it is. And so children's playground is the turf, that's how they market it. But if y'all want to change that to say playground grass, we could certainly do that, if y'all would like to add that into the resolution, because I think that's what, that's clearly what you're getting.
I think if somebody picks up this resolution that hasn't been privy to this discussion, they're going to be like, wow, we didn't get what we were supposed to get.
The mayor, I make the suggestion then that when the ordinance... If someone wants to make a motion to approve the resolution, approve it with, um, the word playground, the word grass added after playground in the resolution, and then I think that'll be clearer. Playground turf, okay. Playground turf.
Any further discussion on fourteen ninety-four? Do I have a motion to adopt?
Make a motion, we, uh, adopt fourteen ninety-four, twenty twenty-five with the amendments that, uh, David suggested, the turf.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Gusterson?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Yes.
Brabner?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. Like to present Resolution fourteen ninety-five, twenty twenty-five, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Spanish Fort and the Alabama Department of Transportation for grading and or landscaping on a right-of-way. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this is a proposed agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation, uh, to allow the city to remove certain improvements, including concrete adjacent to the right-of-way and, uh, where Valor Park is going to be located. Uh, upon removal of the concrete and those improvements, a new parking lot, driveway, and access associated with this park will be constructed within the right-of-way, uh, and maintained by the city pursuant to the terms of this agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Discussion from the council? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution number fourteen ninety-five, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
Gusterson?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Win?
Yes.
Brabner?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. Like to present Resolution fourteen ninety-six, twenty twenty-five, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Spanish Fort and Culture City for the provision of sensory-inclusive training and equipment for the Spanish Fort Fire Rescue Department. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this is a proposed memorandum of understanding with Culture City for the provision of sensory-inclusive training and equipment for the fire department. A cap, a copy of the proposed agreement is attached as exhibit one. Uh, and the, the training that would be provided from Culture City is training to provide accessibility and to train firefighters for dealing with persons with sensory issues to include but not be limited to persons with autism, post-traumatic stress disorder, Parkinson's, obsessive-compulsive disorder, attention-deficit disorder, and other disabilities in order to help them have, uh, friendly environments and encourage participation and aid to them. In addition, there'll be some additional, um, items to participate and help, uh, in training and also comforting those persons with those disabilities. Uh, this is being provided, uh, through Culture City and through grants and other private, uh, contributions, and will be at no cost to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Discussion from the council? Do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt Resolution fourteen ninety-six, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
Gusterson?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Win?
Yes.
Brabner?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. Like to present Resolution fourteen ninety-eight, twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with Turf Tank USA Inc. for the rental of a robotic paint sprayer for athletic fields. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this is a proposed agreement for the rental of a robotic paint sprayer for the athletic fields for the City of Spanish Fort. Uh, the installation, uh, implementation cost will be seventeen hundred dollars, and the amount will be sixteen thousand dollars per year. Uh, this would allow for, uh, the robot that uses GPS and satellites, uh, to paint, uh, accurately paint and, uh, lines on all athletic fields in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Discussion from the council? I will tell you, this is a neat machine. It, uh, it does the job quick, it cuts out man hour. I mean, they painted the kids, the youth soccer fields in like thirty, forty-five minutes where it takes us six to eight hours to get it done, and our lines are not always as straight and pretty as this. This, uh, will not only save us a lot of man hours, it will save us a lot of paint also, because it just doesn't overspray like we have the Tennessee to do on occasions, so. Uh, uh, I did see that exhibit and it was just truly outstanding. When you look at a, a soccer field and you have three youth fields and every line is directly across from each other, it's perfect, and it can be used for special paintings, if you wanted to paint end zones or things like that. It can be used for painting parking lots, uh, those kind of things. So, do I have a motion to adopt?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution number fourteen ninety-eight, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Gusterson?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Win?
Yes.
Abner?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. Like to introduce Resolution fifteen oh two, twenty twenty-five, a resolution setting forth the rules and regulations for the rental and or use for the Spanish Fort Community Center. David?
Mayor, this is a resolution amending, uh, the rules and regulations for the use of the Spanish Fort Community Center, in particular, uh, clarifying who those persons are that would be responsible for the rental agreement and implementation of all costs and being physically present at the premises. Uh, also, uh, state, setting rules for the use of the lobby, uh, and other surrounding areas when the multipurpose room is rented. It would also increase, uh, the amount for rental fees for residents from seven hundred and fifty dollars to eight hundred and fifty dollars per six hours. Also, it would increase the non-residential fee from one thousand to eleven hundred dollars per day, and allow the lobby to be used under certain conditions related to the multipurpose room, as well as the kitchen to be used, uh, for event rental and storage, subject to approval by the mayor and city clerk, and would also allow for people to set up prior to an event during business hours, subject to availability of the facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Discussion from the council? We're going to hold on to this, uh, resolution and present it in our May fifth meeting as a few little tweaks that we think we discussed in the work session, I'd like to see done on this one. Any further discussion on fifteen oh two? Moving to Resolution fifteen oh three, twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the fire chief of the City of Span, Spanish Fort, Alabama to make application for the state homeland security grant program on behalf of the Spanish Fort Fire Rescue Department. And have we clarified that?
Chief Hughes, correct, May fifteenth. Yes, sir.
So Mark went up for the fire department, is that what I just heard from you?
I conceded.
Mr. Connor?
Uh, Mayor, this is a proposed grant agreement with the state homeland security grant program on behalf of the Fire Rescue Department, authorizes the mayor and the fire chief to file an application for a grant, uh, with that agency. Uh, a copy of the, uh, cost of the proposal and proposed installation of security cameras and monitoring, uh, equipment to provide additional security at fire stations is included as an exhibit.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Discussion from the council? It's being introduced tonight, will be on your May fifth agenda. Moving to Resolution fifteen oh four, twenty twenty-five, a resolution appointing members to the Spanish Fort Public School Commission. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this is a proposed resolution to appoint, uh, and or reappoint certain members to the Public School Commission. Uh, this resolution would appoint Aaron Pedden as the, uh, recommended person from the Spanish Fort Middle School Principal for a term of three years, beginning on May two, twenty twenty-four. Joshua Wine for a term of three years, as recommended by the city council, for a term beginning on, three, uh, three years, beginning on May second, twenty twenty-five. Did I say twenty twenty-two? I meant twenty twenty-five, both of those. And then Randy Stewart for a term of three years, as recommended by the Spanish Fort Elementary School Principal, for a term of three years, beginning on May, May second, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Discussion from the council? As this is an administrative item, do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
Gusterson?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Yes.
Brabner?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. Like to introduce Resolution fifteen oh five, twenty twenty-five, a resolution appointing a voting delegate for the City of Spanish Fort, Alabama, to serve as the city's voting delegate to the Alabama League of Municipalities twenty twenty-five annual convention. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, the city is a member of the Alabama League of Municipalities, and pursuant to its, uh, participation at the annual convention, the city is entitled to one vote on items that come before vote pursuant to the constitution of the League of Municipalities. Uh, this resolution would appoint Councilmember Mary Brabner to serve as the city's voting delegate at the league convention to be held on May thirteen through sixteen, twenty twenty-five in Huntsville, Alabama, and Councilmember Carl Gustafson will be appointed as an alternate delegate, delegate in the event that Councilmember Brabner is unable to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Discussion from the council? Do I have a motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
Gusterson?
Yes.
Uh, Perry?
Yes.
Win?
Yes.
Brabner?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, do I have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt Resolution fifteen oh five, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
Gusterson?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Win?
Yes.
Brabner?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. Like to present, introduce Resolution fifteen oh six, twenty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the mayor and the police chief of the City of Spanish Fort, Alabama, to make application for a homeland security grant program. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this is a proposed resolution to authorize the mayor chief of police to file an application with the Homeland Security Grant Program for available grant funding to purchase equipment, uh, in accordance with the grant program. This application is under development, uh, and is being introduced tonight, and would be, would authorize that application to be filed upon completion.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Discussion from the council? Being introduced tonight, will be on your May fifth agenda. Moving to Resolution fifteen oh seven, twenty twenty-five, a resolution awarding a bid for portable training facility for the Spanish Fort Police Department. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this resolution would award a bid to GT Distributors Inc. for a portable training facility for the Spanish Fort Police Department in accordance with their bid, dated April three, twenty twenty-five, which is attached as exhibit one, subject to any changes deemed necessary by the mayor. Uh, the copy of the bid is in the amount, is attached as an exhibit and is an amount of twenty thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Chief, will you tell me exactly what this is, this training facility, sixteen by twenty-four?
So it's modular, it's, um, a training facility that works with the simunition rounds that we use to, uh, imitate force-on-force training. We use the same weapons that we use on duty, as far as our AR-15 rifles or Glock pistols, but we use a different kind of round that will work within this facility. It's modular, so we can change it, uh, to have configured different rooms. Uh, we're actually combining two different components to make one larger one. Uh, again, this was awarded under the Homeland Security Grant from last year, so there's no cost to the city.
All right, any discussion from the council? Being introduced tonight, will be on your May fifth agenda. Like to present Resolution fifteen oh eight, twenty twenty-five, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Spanish Fort and Hunter Security for the monitoring of internal two-way communications for the elevator here at the City of Spanish Fort Community Center. Mr. Connor?
Mayor, this is a proposed agreement with Hunter Security for, to provide monitoring for internal two-way communications with the elevator at the Spanish Fort Community Center. A copy of the proposed agreement is attached as exhibit one, and the amount of the monitoring and services provided are for fifty-five dollars a month for a term of three years.
Any discussion from the council?
One question I wanted to ask, does this elevator have a camera inside? During the library board meeting, we talked about the need to, you know, be able to monitor those things, and I know a lot of times an elevator does have a camera in it, knowing it's a closed-end space. Does it have one of those?
I don't know that, I don't think, Shannon, do you know?
Yes, there is a camera that would, uh, I presume that would be part of the Hunter Security monitoring.
Thank you.
The other discussion on fifteen oh eight, twenty twenty-five? Because this is a time-sensitive item, I would ask to suspend the rule for immediate consideration?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
Gusterson?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Win? Yes.
Brabner?
Yes, do I have a motion to adopt?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution fifteen oh eight, twenty twenty-five.
Discussion? Roll call?
Smith?
Yes.
Gusterson?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Win? Yes.
Brabner?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, the resolution is adopted. Any other business come before the council tonight? Do I have a motion to adjourn?